I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, August 3, 2023, to order. Well, the clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Maritato.
Here.
Trustee Pojek.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
Can I make a comment right away? Something just came up, and I want to make a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing many legations and probable imminent legations per se to the Open Meetings Act V.
Second.
Awesome. Go ahead.
Do we need a roll call?
Was there a second?
I said second.
We need a roll call.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder.
Yes.
Okay, this meeting is...
Well, we're going to recess to executive.
A recess for executive session.
Five minutes.
All right.
Where do you want this?
Meeting is called back to order. Now, we move on to community announcement. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is hosting their annual Citizens Police Academy. The Citizens Police Academy will be held on Wednesdays from September 6 through November 15, and features a realistic view of police work taught by Glendale Heights Police Officers. Enrollment is free and open to citizens 18 years of age and older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the village website. For more information, contact the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. The Village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Monday, September 11, with a silent parade of first responder vehicles, followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 p.m. on the front steps of the village hall. Please join the Village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights community as we come together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot Day. Never forget those we lost on September 11, 2001. For more information, please call Jessica at 630-909-5123. Thank you.
Trustee District 2.
Join the Village of Glendale Heights and University of Chicago Medicine, Edmond Health, Glen Oaks for a free family movie night on Thursday, August 10 at 7 p.m. Bring your blankets, lawn chairs, and picnic baskets out to Camera Park as we show Disney's Encanto. For more information, please call Jessica at 630-909-5123. Get your dancing shoes on for our final concert in the park. Join us on Wednesday, August 9, as we close out the summer season with anthem. The final concert of the season will be at Camera Park from 7 to 9 p.m. For more information, call Jessica at 630-909-5123.
Trustee District 3.
Thank you.
Light.
The Village of Glendale Heights is gearing up for the 40th Annual Show and Shine Car Show Swap Meet at Camera Park on Sunday, September 24 from 10 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. There will be 18 classes of vehicle on display along with the swap meet, food, music, and more. If you're interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/carshow to download a registration form. Also, if you'd like to volunteer, come find me. I'll find you something to do. Next one. GH2O Aquatic Center, last day of the season, is Monday, September 4. Postseason pool hours will begin August 12, when the pool only be open on Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 6 p.m. Stop by and cool off in the pool and soak up... Sorry, soak up the sun. For more information on GH2O and the postseason hours, contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. The end of summer is here.
Clerk Schmidt, please.
School will be back in session soon, and it is very important to obey speed limits, especially in school zones, and to remain extra cautious and alert for children while driving through our community. Pay extra attention around parked cars, school crossings, bus stops, and anywhere else children might be present. Students should try and keep a regular route to and from school and never walk alone. Always remember to follow traffic signals and crossing guards. For more information, please contact the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070.
Trustee Maritato.
The Village of Glendale Heights invite you to the annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on Friday, August 25 with a 9 a.m. shotgun start at Glendale Heights Golf Club. This year, the Charity Golf Classic will be raising funds for the Northern Illinois Food Bank, Family and Faked Food Pantry, the Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program, the FOP Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund, the Glendale Heights Chamber Commerce Scholarship Fund, and the Glendale Heights Foundation. If you would like more information, wish to become a host sponsor or to make a Raffle Prize donation, please call the Glendale Heights Golf Club at 630-260-0018 or the mayor's office at 630-909-5303. Help us make the annual classic golf classic another great success. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pojek.
Come on out to Camera Park September 14 through the 24 for Oktoberfest, sponsored by Elka Inc. And the Village of Glendale Heights enjoy authentic German food and drink, live band, dancing, entertainers, and other family-friendly activities. Enter for a chance to win a trip to Germany, which will include a special brewery tour. For more information, including hours, entertainment schedule, and admission fees, visit www.glandalehighssoktofest.com or call 323-577-3893.
Trustee Schroeder.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Stop by Veterans Memorial Park on Thursdays through September 21 for the new Glendale Heights Summer Market. Shop for local products, crafts, and more from local-sourced vendors. The market runs from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya Mako at 630-909-5459. Also, the next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be this Saturday, August 5, at the Center for Senior Citizens from noon... From 10 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village presidents or the village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302. Thank you.
You're welcome. Number 2, appointment of Sandra Burgas as Plan Commissioner-Secretary. After meeting with Deputy Mayor Pat Maritato and Acting Village Administrator Doug Flint in a few times since our last board meeting, this serves as notification of my intent to appoint Sandra Burgas as Plan Commissioner-Secretary. I will continue to work with Deputy Mayor Pat Maritato and Acting Village Administrator Doug Flint to fill any remaining vacancies. I understand that many of you, including myself, were hoping for more appointments and reappointments, but there are some differences I am trying to work out with the board. I am still hopeful that by our next meeting in August, we are able to fill more of the vacancies on your committee and commissions. Number 3.
Wait, Doug, can I... Sorry, Mayor. Are we appointing Sandra tonight, or is it only the intent to...
No, we're appointing her.
We are appointing her.
So then we would need a motion.
Yes.
Yes, I need a motion to appoint... Trustee Light.
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder.
Yes.
Number 3, congratulations... Where is that lady? Okay. Number 3, recognition of Village of Glendale Heights Arts and Public Works staff for cleanup after July 12, 2023 storm. Number 4.
No, Trustee... Trustee Maritato's got something he wants to say.
He's coming after reading this, you know.
I think he's going to say it now.
Okay, go ahead.
I, along with the entire village board, would like to recognize all the employees from the parks and Public Works Department who assisted residents impact by the storm on July 12. Our crews did an amazing job assisting residents, cleaning up storm debris, and getting our roadways back open. The support of our employees provide to the community on a daily basis is recognized by everyone on the board and everyone in the community. I just want to say thank you to all our employees who selfishly assist residents each and every day. And that storm mostly hit my district. And when I had the call, I went out and talked to the residents, met Doug, and the residents were happy how fast that we responded to the cleanup. So, I mean, I might... I myself would like to thank everybody that helped everybody in my district.
Pat.
So, thank you.
I'd like to also... I'd like to also add to that because I also went out through your district because I have a lot of friends that live over there. And I was amazed at the amount of efficiency that everybody worked together to move this debris. And I was shocked at sheds all over, and roofs were removed, and the damage was... I mean, you can't do everything for them, but you know what? Every little bit helped, and they did a wonderful job and a great job. And you did a great job, Pat, because you were out there with every single one of your residents. I thank you.
I just also want to say that it also was the staff that was out there was also at Fest the whole day, setting up at Fest.
Yeah.
Came back out for the storm and then came back on the 13th to finish up cleanup and then went back to Fest to finish setting up Fest. So, everybody that was out there did yeoman's work and really a testament to how they feel about all the residents getting everything cleaned up.
Yes. Since we are recognizing, so I just also want to add the splendid performance and duty done by our police department on the Fest.
No, that's coming next.
Yeah, okay. And one more thing before I go. I also want to recognize Tanya Mako for putting that Fest market in a short notice.
Done. Number 4.
I have one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
I just want to let everybody know, I didn't go into Pat's district, but I went into my district, and everything was okay. I talked to Doug about that. Everything was perfect, so I'm sorry for your district getting hit so bad.
It was a good cleanup, and everybody did a great job. I appreciate it.
Done. Number 4, recognition of Village of Glendale Heights Staff and Police Department Glendale Heights Fest. Deputy Mayor Pat Maritato will be doing the recognition tonight. Deputy Mayor Pat, go ahead.
Okay, this is the next one. I, in the village board, would like to recognize Chief Pappas, the ETA Security Company, Queen Bee Schools District 16, Glendale Heights Esda, Glenside Fire District, Kawana of Glendale Heights, the Glendale Heights Foundation, L.I. Universal Security K-9 Teams, and lastly, the Village of Glendale Heights Facility Team, led by Gary Lopez and Steve Engel for getting all the electrical infrastructure completed so our video system could be installed prior to Glendale Heights Fest. The police department's security plan, along with all our supporting partners, made Glendale Heights Fest a very safe place to be. And on that one, George, everybody did a great job. Everybody I spoke to, they said we had... Security was great. Everybody felt safe. So, on that note, we appreciate you. And I was talking to some residents, and they love you. I tell you. They said if you go, I go. I said... So, thank you again, everybody.
I'll pass those kind words along. Thank you, Pat.
Everybody had participated. Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing. Actually, George, that is true about you because one of the resident said that your police chief has the most cherished face I have ever seen on any other...
Don't talk about his dimples here.
So, I just want to pass that. I'm not saying to you, so... Yes, that's true.
Thanks.
Hi, George.
Face. Anybody just go ahead.
I just got one thing to say. This is the safest, and I mean the safest fest that I've ever attended in the Village of Glendale Heights in all these years I've been a trustee. It was very safe, well organized, and security was just A1 tops. Thank you, guys.
So, if I could, Mayor, real quick, David put together just a two-minute video of Summer Fest. If we could just show that really quickly, and we can go on to number 5. And this is going to be in effect starting in September, but letters went out informing residents, I think, this week or last week. And so, that's where the questions have come up, and I'm here to answer some of those questions. So, the quick synopsis of the program, of the second program that we run, the residents' rates will not change from the ComEd rate. There will be no change to a residence rate. There will be no change to a residence billing. They will still be billed and have their energy delivered by ComEd. If a storm comes, like, it sounds like in July, the residents can still call ComEd if there's a power outage. There's virtually no change to the residents. So, the question is, why do we run this program? Well, this program, at no cost to the village or no cost to residents, allows for the resident... Or allows for the village to purchase 5% renewable energy. That's over 3 million kilowatts of renewable energy on behalf from the supplier, MC Squared, who we're working with with this program. I made an infographic. It's hard to see, and it doesn't have the whole thing. It's not... I should have designed one just for this presentation, but this one just kind of shows you what does 3 million or over 3 million kilowatt... Kilowatt-hours look like. And you can see there, it's this equivalent of burning 3 million pounds of coal or 970 tons of waste and the carbon emissions that come from that. So, it is not a small amount. It is a pretty drastic amount of green energy that is being produced. Some of the questions that are... That's the benefit of the program, to be clear. It's kind of... That's what the green... Is the green energy. Also, Glendale Heights, at the end of the year, will become a green energy partner, EPA-certified green energy partner, which comes with a couple highway signs. I think you guys should have one or two already. And so, they add a sticker to that as well. So, that is the purpose of the program. You join probably 40 or 50 other communities in Illinois to become a green power community at no cost to the residents. However, there have been some questions, and this is the one time communicating to residents is always a little difficult. And so, letters went out, and some of the questions that I've heard is that there's different letters that are going out in this program. And that is correct. There's three types of letters that go out to residents that are just informing them of the program. If you have solar panels, if you have chosen a different supplier, if you're on the ComEd hourly program, so pretty much you have already gone and made a different decision other than ComEd, this program by state law leaves you with what your decision has already been. We leave you be. We do not mess with people who have already made a decision. We send them a letter that informs them of the program. By state law, you have the right to be informed of the program. If you have solar panels, you would get a letter that says, here's the program. No action needed on your end. If you would like to... Let's say you're on solar panels, opt into the program and pay the ComEd rate. You can do that at no cost. So, it's just an informational letter. And then, there's going to be some residents on ComEd that will also get an informational letter, kind of saying nothing else is happening. And then, there will be about 20% of the residents got a letter that's saying you will be moved to the program. They got an opt-out letter. So, if they do nothing, they will be moved to MC Square. A reminder, if they are moved to MC Square, they're still billed by ComEd, and they are still paying the same ComEd rate. So, everyone kind of got different letters. So, you and your neighbor maybe both got a letter, and they may have had different things on it, and that is by intentional design. And that's kind of the way the program runs, based on some of the decisions residents have made previously. I tried to give the quickest, most quick synopsis of the program. Are there any questions I can still help with?
So, if the resident don't do anything, they will be still getting the ComEd rate, correct? Or they have to...
Correct. Yes, unless they previously made some... You know, if someone's with a different supplier, excluding them, yes. All residents will pay the ComEd rate.
So, in order to change, they have to opt in or opt out from ComEd?
That depends on the letter that they received.
Okay.
But a resident that won't... Let's say a resident that got an opt-out letter, they will automatically be included in the program unless they choose, and there's either email, there's a letter, you can call, or go to a website to opt out. So, there's all those options on how to opt out.
So, opt out... I mean, let's say you received a letter of this opt-out one.
Correct.
Meaning, you have to... They have to call you guys and telling them that, hey, don't change ours.
There's a little attachment they can mail back to them. There's a website that they could go to. There's an email that they could send it to, or they could call, and all four of those would optimize.
But if they don't do any of those, then it means they will be converted back?
Correct, at no extra cost, but yes.
Yeah, but the rate is going... You don't know the rate. The rate is going to be changed, correct? If they are going to come to your...
No, because the ComEd rate is going to be guaranteed matching the ComEd.
Oh, okay.
So, there is no change to the rate. So, if the ComEd rate next month inches up half a cent, which it could do, then all residents who are with MC Square and who are not are going to. It's... There's no difference in if the program was run or if it wasn't run.
Okay.
All residents are going to pay the same rate.
Yeah, there was some confusion because I saw so many...
Understandable.
Yeah.
Understandable.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
How long will that rate last? A year, two years?
ComEd, that's a little complicated question. ComEd has one rate for a fixed rate for about a year. This program also goes for a year. The reason we worked with Doug to figure out a year is that next year, we're going to hope that we can beat the ComEd rate and save residents money. That's our number-one goal. So, next September, we're going to hope to see if we can beat the ComEd rate.
All right.
Come... Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Light.
Okay. Adam, the only complaint I had gotten from my residents was the fact that the letters that did go out did not have enough information. They were very vague, and they left them with more questions than they got answers from the sheet.
I... There's a couple of things I would want to... One, I hear that concern, and there's just some things by state law because this is an Illinois-sponsored program. Not every state does this. And by the way, this allows for more competitive rates. ComEd is one of the second lowest rates in all of the United States, and we think it's because of aggregation, they become more competitive. But we cannot... There's a lot of language that MC Squared, our supplier, cannot say. They cannot say what the ComEd rate is. They cannot say we guarantee... There's just a lot of logistical lingo that they cannot use that we would like them to use. But any feedback would be appreciated as well, especially...
Yeah, it just seemed to be very vague in what was taking place, and they were very concerned because they weren't getting the answers that they wanted. So, they called me, and I didn't know of the three different letters going out. So, trying to navigate their situation is different than the other person I just talked to.
Sure.
So, now I got a better understanding of what that was, so...
I'd also, you know, I can give you my card, and you can direct those, and I could personally help those people out with those sort of questions. I'll give it to Doug right now.
I'll do that, yeah.
There you go.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Coker. I have residents in my association, over 400 of them.
And there is confusion about that letter.
Sure.
It's like saying, if you don't respond to this particular letter, we're going to change your auto insurance without your knowledge of it. A lot of people threw away that letter, not realizing when I told them that if you don't respond to that opt-out, you're automatically enrolled. So, what gives you the right to say, we're going to switch you automatically? Is that illegal?
No, that's a really good question. It's actually... It was approved by... Municipal Aggregation was approved by voters by referendum 2012 that gave the board the authority to do this. So, voters, residents approved this in 2012. Second of all, it is a state-run program. It is a state-sponsored program. And third of all, the benefit of this, just a reminder, is that you... At no different cost to residents, it allows for green energy to be purchased on behalf of the...
Right, but you're switching them by default if they don't respond.
Correct.
So, how easy for them to then remove themselves if they decide after the fact, when they find out that they got a new provider?
How easy is it to?
Yes.
You can opt out at any point. Once again, you can go to the website. You can go through the email. You can go phone call. I'll give you my card as well, and I can personally help make sure that they're opted out as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good questions.
Mr. Adam, can I also get a card?
I'll drop... Doug, I'm going to just give you a couple, and you can handle it.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, yes. Yeah, yes.
Okay, this goes for a year?
Yes.
So, after the year, if you opted out or if you opted in?
If you've opted out or if you opted in, do you go back to ComEd automatically?
Automatically by the law. So... Automatically by the law. So, yes.
Only a year?
Only a year. Now
Bad.
Good or bad, yes. Only a year or we could renew. So if the board chooses to renew, so probably next spring, we'll come back and say, here are our options. Um, so a reminder, our number one option is to help save residents money. So, um, in a year from now, we'll renew our options. If we do not renew a deal with MC squared, another supplier, everyone is automatically sent back to comment who is part of the program. We have never had issues with this and we've run it over two, three hundred times. So you, residents really do not have to do anything to be part of this program. It's not costing anything and you get to be an EPA green community and you can see the green energy that's produced up because of it. Good questions.
Anybody else? Okay, so we are proceeding to next.
Thank you, Adam.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board from public? Yes.
Mike Ontiveros, Glendale Heights. Uh, with the appointment of Sandra Burgess as the plant commission secretary, not saying anything good or bad or indifferent, uh, just want to know if first of all, she's a resident of Glendale Heights. I'm not aware of this individual. Can you answer that, please, the board?
She is.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and then also with all the, um, appointments that are still out there, what was that criteria to give her that position that she met?
The criteria is we need a secretary. It's an officer of the plan commission.
She's also a, she's also
I'm just asking a general question just to figure it out because we have a number of appointments that we're trying to figure out.
She's also an employee within the com dev office. So historically, the, the sitting secretary of the plant commission has come from the community development department.
Wonderful.
And the opening there created, the opening that we have, uh, we reached out to people, to, uh, the office staff in com dev. And Sandra, uh, is eminently qualified and volunteered to be on that position.
Great. Just wanted a clarification.
But it keeps everything within the com dev confines.
Okay.
Uh, I have a quick question. Uh, not with you, Mr. Panthers, but actually to Doug. Uh, where are we with our other appointments for the committees or commissions?
So right now trustee Meritato and Mayor Coker are in conversation? Or maybe not, but they're in conversation. So they're in conversation, negotiations on the committees and commissions.
So where are we with negotiations? Deputy mayor, is it twenty-five percent, fifty percent or you are in the middle?
We're talking about it.
We're talking about, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we got some differences, but I think we may get there.
Oh, really?
Maybe not this week or could be next year. Who knows, but we'll get there.
Next year?
Yeah, could be. Who knows? We'll get there.
You, you don't seem so much optimistic.
Okay, any, anybody else from public? No. So we are, want to proceed, you know, uh, you have the consent agenda before you, word acting village administrator, Doug Flint. Please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of June sec, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Two, approval of the committee, the whole meeting minutes of June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Three, ratification of the accounts payable listing of July sixth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of two million, two hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Four, ratification of the accounts payable listing of July twentieth, twenty twenty-three, amount of one million, five hundred, two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Five, approval of the accounts payable listing of August third, twenty twenty-three in the amount of three million, four hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Six, resolution of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, adopting fourth quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget amendments. Seven, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the first amendment to an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for professional engineering services for the complete monitoring and reporting of tributary number two of the east branch of Dupage River stream and wetland restoration. Eight, resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for document imaging services. Nine, a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for the installation of high efficiency lighting fixtures at Cameron Park, Nazos Park and Ruskin Park in the village of Glendale Heights from the six twenty-two, twenty twenty-three COW. Ten, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of second amendment to the contract between Homer Tree Care Incorporated and the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eleven, a resolution to approve and authorize execution of the first amendment to the contract between Winkler Services LLC and the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Twelve, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for sanding, refinishing and restriping the gym floor at the Glendale Heights Sports Hub. Thirteen, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the furnishing professional design engineering services for the West Burdette sanitary sewer project. Fourteen, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the James Cork Storm Sewer Improvement Project. Fifteen, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the furnishing professional construction engineering services for the James Cork Storm Sewer Improvement Project. Sixteen, a resolution to authorize the amendment to the allocation of rebuild Illinois bond funds for the twenty twenty-two residential road improvement program. Seventeen, a resolution authorizing the execution of a change order number two, final for Lincoln Avenue Storm Sewer Replacement Project in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eighteen, a motion to approve pay request number three, final to Unique Plumbing Company for the Lincoln Avenue Storm Sewer Replacement Project. Total amount not to exceed sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Nineteen, motion to approve pay request number thirteen to V three Construction Group Limited for the east branch tributary number two, channel maintenance, total amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, seventy-five dollars. Twenty, motion to approve pay request number two to Michael's Trenchless for the Jacobson Storm Sewer Lining Project, total amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, sixty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. Twenty-one, final, uh, approval of consent to items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Uh, trustee light?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Discussion. Non-roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritano?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The consent agenda is, as amended, is approved. Old business, there is none. New business, a motion to waive first reading on new business item four. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item four?
If I can, on, on my request, I'm asking that number three be removed from the agenda.
Completely removed?
Yeah, completely removed at this point. So that's why there's only a request to waive first reading on agenda item number four.
Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item four? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business items is approved, four is approved. Number two, an ordinance to amend chapter eleven entitled, reserved of title four entitled business and licenses, license regulations of the village code, of the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, from the June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three COW, first reading. Number three is gone.
Before, yeah.
So Peter, you want to remove three or four?
Number three was removed.
But mayor said that that four has to be removed.
No, three.
No, number four was we waived the first reading.
We have first reading.
Number four, an ordinance to amend chapter four entitled, general traffic provisions of title seven entitled motor vehicle and traffic of the village code, of the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, request to waive first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty? Trustee Siddiqui?
So moved. Second.
Second trustee, uh, deputy mayor Pat. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty is approved. Public discussion, is there, there is no committee of the whole meeting tonight. Therefore, we will have public discussion on any village related business as we normally vote in COW. But first is, there anyone on the board that would like to add anything? Yes, like.
For me? Okay, a couple of quick things. One of them, um, where are we at with our overweight signs that we should be having up? I know we're missing quite a few throughout town.
Just give me your point, that, your point, then we can proceed, you know. Anybody else? Yes, Pat.
Yeah, well, did he answer your question, Mike?
I was asking a question. Where are we at with the overweight?
I have two.
I think the mayor at this point is only taking a list of items.
Okay, just, why have more than that then?
I think Mike has It's number four that you just approved to answer your question.
Yes, Pat.
I got, uh,
You can come back.
I drove down Fulton Avenue, Doug, and it does look better. But I mean, you know, it ain't, uh, great, but I mean, next year they're going to be doing, right? So.
And then Fulton Avenue, then we will come back. Yeah, then we will come back.
Getting on him, guys. I appreciate it. And, uh, George, uh, our construction by the golf course. Uh, did you let everybody know about the parking? We're on, kind of give them a leeway?
We can discuss later, you know, let me, let me have, you know, first points, you know.
I think we're just accumulating a list as we
I'm making a list.
I'll put golf course construction.
Anybody else?
I think trustee light had another.
Again.
I had some more, um, summer market and community garden.
Oh, you just steal mine.
I'll take it.
No, no, that's fine. It's, it's okay. Yep.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
Pakistani and India, uh, um.
Cultural Day.
Pardon?
Cultural Day.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, number bad.
This is number six.
Number, who's next?
Then it would be the public.
Public, anybody from public? They have, yes, at Pope.
Mike Light.
Oh, I thought Wayne.
Just mention what you want to talk, then we'll call you later, you know.
No, now it's public discussion.
No, it's public discussion, isn't it?
About anything now.
Okay.
And then we'll go back.
But it is about a, it's about an agenda item anyway. My, my question was about item number sixteen. I, I found the, the amendment really confusing. What's the amendment for the, for the allocation of the rebuild America fund? It, it really was vague on the website.
I can explain that. Um, this was funding we were given in the last, um, three years, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. And it was just a housekeeping exercise. We had to amend the resolution to I dot to, um, balance the amount that we spent by about thirty thousand more. So it was just a housekeeping exercise of a resolution for I dot.
Okay, so you were able to use all those funds?
We, we've already spent them all. It was just, um, uh, an adjustment on one of the resolutions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, please state your name and address.
Uh, I'm the owner of Smoke Tok's Smoke Shop in Glendale Heights. And we got a notice about what we can and can't sell as far as Delta and hemp products. So I'm here to discuss that with the board today.
You can make whatever comments you want to make. You got five minutes.
Um, so we were given a notice about after September fifth, we're not allowed to sell, um, certain Delta or, uh, THC products. But, uh, we have a dispensary coming into town. Their stuff is a lot more potent and we're told at the smoke shop that we can't sell certain products. Uh, when our THC levels are within the two thousand eighteen farm bill, um, that states that we can't sell anything above point zero three THC percentage. Um, and we don't, we don't sell anything that's above point zero three, uh, THC percentage. So, um, it's big business for us. It's, uh, we're, uh, Smoke Tok's Smoke Shop and American Smoke Shop are two biggest smoke shops in Glendale Heights. Um, it affects us big time. Um, so I'm here to discuss that. If there's any questions you guys have for us. Um, again, we're twenty-one and up. Uh, we can't sell to anybody older, uh, younger than twenty-one. Um, I think as in anybody over twenty-one has a right to purchase whatever they like as far as if it's liquor, if it's stuff from the dispensary. Um, so I'm just curious on what the issue is as far as the law goes. Um, I know Glendalean, um, town has reversed their decision on banning Delta products and THC products from smoke shops. Uh, Algena has also reversed their decision. Um, Caro Stream's allowed to, Addison's allowed to, uh, Bloomingdale's allowed to. So what I'm getting at is if they're not going to purchase from a business from Glendale Heights, they're going to just go down the street uh, to a different smoke shop in Bloomingdale or Caro Stream and their business is going to go somewhere else. Let's keep that money inside Glendale Heights. Um, we're a small business. Um, it's hard to run small businesses these days. Expenses have gone up. And to take away a big business, um, part of our business, I feel like it's going to be, you know, hard to do business in Glendale Heights for us. Um, so I'm just curious on what the, um, background information is as far as
Altria's chief.
Or what the point of view is, you know.
Ju- just for reference on the board, this is number two under new business. There's no action taken tonight, right? First reading. So sir, sir, nothing was passed today? Um, but the products that are being banned have been classified as illegal basically narcotics by the DEA. Um, so that's why they are being banned. That's the simple version.
I think that's, uh, there's more to it than just that.
Actually, there's not. It's that, it's that simple.
There is a two thousand eighteen farm bill that's a federal bill. Um, there are certain THC old products that we cannot sell, which, yeah, that, that has been labeled as narcotics. But Delta eight and Delta ten and eleven and HHC, these are not included with that THCO. Um, so as far as what's banned from, uh, who, uh, that's under narcotics, the product is THCO. Um, not every hemp product is banned.
Correct. And these products are not considered hemp?
Uh, Delta products are.
They are.
So it's, it's underneath the farm bill.
We can, we can agree to disagree.
Okay. Is, is there any more now? Do you guys, is that the only reason why that's, uh?
Correct. The village is against selling narcotics to its residents.
Um, so we can get, so again, they're, they're under point zero three percentage THC.
Correct.
Wouldn't be
And the DEA has, has said that they are illegal to sell. So the village is
Do you have, like, a, a proof of that and stuff like that or?
Correct. Grab a, grab a copy of the ordinance.
Okay.
And you can read it.
Okay. So also, my question is, we allow a dispensary that carries more potent products than we do.
Correct. That would suggest you, you, you apply for a license under the cannabis act and you could sell those products. It'd be perfectly legal.
Um, so not any other town is doing this?
They are. That is incorrect.
That is incorrect. That is definitely incorrect.
Okay. Do you know which towns?
In this year at the state attorney's office, Bloomingdale, Addison, Downers Grove, Warrenville and Wayne, all met with the state attorney. So i- if we are ahead of the game, we're ahead of the game and that's it. If the, if you've, you look at your product, it's not regulated, you compare your product to cannabis dispensaries. How much regulation are, is in your product? Do you know? How long is your items on, on the shelf?
Everything we sell, you can, you can scan a barcode and it gives you lab results on exactly what the product is. Um, so everything we sell is kind of actually is
Kind of, that's it. Okay, I'm going to just defer back to what
If you have any issues, you can consult with the, the Department of Justice.
Okay, but there is no decision being made, um.
It is only up for first reading today. It'll be passed at the, it'll be up for passage at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, so we can start, you know, number, uh, one, light.
I don't remember where I started. What was that one? That was
Overweight signs?
Overweight signs. Where are we at, George? Overweight signs. I know we're
That was, you just passed that tonight, number four.
That was part of it. Well, getting them out there now.
Now that we've, we've readjusted the ordinance to, uh, permit the signs, now we have to, I've already talked to Jeff McCumber, uh, earlier this week. Um, ordinance has been passed, signs need to be ordered and put up.
So a week or so maybe?
Oh, it's going to take the order to signs, but it can be a little bit, few weeks.
Okay.
Trustee Light, you have market and
Oh, yeah. I wanted to say, uh, kudos to Tanya, um, Echo on getting the summer markets going. It's taken off really, really well. Um, I've heard a lot of great comments about it. I've heard a lot of people really enjoyed it. I'm a little disappointed, Keith. We couldn't get it going ourselves. I don't know what we missed on that one, but maybe we can ask Tanya to help out and navigate the waters and get it going so we can actually make it bigger and better.
Uh, I have a quick question to Keith.
You have community garden also as well.
Oh, we'll go, we'll go back.
No, go ahead.
Okay, Mohammed and I were both working on this one. Um, community garden, I know we had money allocated for this. We haven't seen any movement. Um, I was just curious if it was a property, was it, uh, a land lock? I mean.
No, so we've chosen the loca-
No, so we've chosen the location and the consultant that we've hired to do that, I met with yesterday. They are in the process of putting together the design for that. I hope to have it, if not at the next board meeting, at the following one.
If this doesn't work out, what if we use the old, uh, tree farm that we have by Mill Pond? Isn't it cordoned off, sectioned off? Wouldn't that be a, a perfect location, already taken care of for?
Hmm, no real parking there.
Yeah, I was, and that's also an area that's actually, uh, floods quite often, and that's why we are trying not to do something. We want an area where the stuff is gonna grow.
That would be a good idea.
Yeah.
I grow weeds. I grow everywhere, so, okay.
I have a quick question. Um, when this community garden you start working on? Because I, since I took the oath, I've been hearing about this community garden. Why it's not being done yet?
I'd say we started on this community garden probably in two thousand and sixteen. Um, I'm close, in the ballpark. Um, the original plan that we tried to work within, and we've had plans and gone through, required us to work with the school district to do so. Uh, earlier this year, I made the decision that we weren't gonna wait any longer because we weren't getting the necessary cooperation. Not their fault. Um, they had a plan that was put together that, quite honestly, um, was bigger than what we were willing to pay for. And so that's why we've chosen to go on this other option, which I think will be great.
So how much money have we spent up till now, or how much money we, we have put for this?
We haven't put a dollar.
Okay, and but how much did we put it, like, is it, uh, one hundred thousand? What, what is the amount?
I think that there's a couple hundred thousand.
Hundred twenty, I believe, is it, right?
So, and this plan that we've created will not cost that much money.
But it's, the money is sitting right now.
Money is there, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I got a question, Keith.
Yeah.
Originally, it was a hundred thousand. How did we get another hundred thousand?
Uh, it was a two-year program that reimbursed us a hundred thousand each year, so we set that aside for the community garden.
Oh, okay. Now, your staff that's investigating this, what are they charging us?
So the company, I believe the agreement, and I'm sorry, I don't have it with me, I believe was five thousand dollars to put this together.
Okay.
So it's a, we, we have asked for a simple. Um, we found a location. We, we think that we can put together something that is simple and meets the needs of the residents and gives them the ability to do this gardening that we're looking to put together.
One of the last question, what's the approximate lease size?
Of the entire space? That's what they're working on. They're working within the park ground to figure out what those, uh, what that information would be.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else know, or Pat?
Fullerton Avenue.
My question is, I mean, why we have, why we spending five thousand for a guy to go out there and look at a, a bunch of dirt that we can dig up ourselves and have the people plant whatever they want?
Uh, it's more than just digging up the dirt. It's setting up the plots and making sure that the system that's set up, that we have the appropriate water uh, needs, the water barrels and stuff like that. It's to do it right. I, I will tell you that, you know, as I said, uh, the original plan was far more than that. I think that we'll be saving a, a great deal of that money that was set aside. I don't think we'll need all that for a much simpler plan than what we had with the school district, and everybody saw that. That's been brought to the board at least once, if not twice. With, um, it had a shelter, and it had a trading area, and it had all different kinds of stuff. This one's gonna be pretty basic.
Is this still, still gonna go in my district, College Park?
It is. The plan is to put it in College Park, if everybody didn't know that, I'm sorry.
Why, why couldn't, why couldn't we do, uh, fifty-gallon drums for water? And have our guys?
I, I, I'm not.
Instead of running wa, I mean, instead of running water, I'm not gonna save money.
The.
I mean, two hundred thousand for a, a community garden.
We're not.
No.
We're not spending that.
We're not spending that.
We're not spending. That's.
That's the money that's been set aside?
Yeah, we are not.
Original quote that came in from the school district, um, was in the five hundred.
Thousands.
Thousands. So we're looking at fencing, we're looking at plots, we're looking at, um, rain barrels. We're looking at, you know, what it takes to put a garden in and, and keep it so that, you know, people that have signed up for their plots only get to use their plots, and it's not open to everybody. But we're looking to, to, uh, not spend nearly what we've set aside.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Sounds good.
I think the board should take a look at the one in Bloomingdale and get an idea. This way, they all know what the heck you're talking about. They have a real nice one. It's been very, very successful.
There's a number, number of them in the area that.
I just know that one.
Pat, you have second one, golf.
Uh, you took care of the parking, right? I mean, for the, uh, golf course area.
The golf, the golf subdivision. They've all been notified.
And George, the, uh, let the people slide when they park on the other side of the street?
We notified the chief, and we asked them to, uh, allow for the on-street parking when there was, uh, construction going on.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep, they communicated.
project, you have, uh, Pakistani and Indian.
Already? All right, Pakistani and Indian. How many applicants, applications have you received?
For having an event like that?
Yeah.
One.
Just one?
That I'm aware of.
One for each event?
Yeah.
Who's gonna?
Three of them, actually.
Who's gonna decide on that? Who gets it? The board, or what?
No.
It's, it's a park rental.
They've submitted a plan to rent the park for a day for a private event.
Right, just one?
One on, one on one day, one on another day.
One on the.
Monarch Butterfly. Is that involved too?
One on the eleventh, one on the nineteenth, one on the twentieth.
Eleventh, nineteenth, and the twentieth. All right, keep me posted on that.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
I will send out information when I get it.
This month?
Yeah, August.
Okay.
Done. Anybody has question? More question? No? None? Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? So public has a, you know, opportunity, if you have any question, have any issue. Yes, Mr. Mike, you are laughing, you know. Come on.
I'm laughing, okay. I do. I'm all about community. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike Ontiveros Glendale Heights, had to introduce myself. And I am, I'm all about community involvement, families, functions, and things like that. But I'm a little confused about having to pay five thousand dollars for a consultant to discuss a community garden. If we've seen other municipalities already do it, why don't we just take a cue, take a look at it, and do it ourselves? What is the big deal?
That sounds very simple. I will tell you, I'm not an expert in community gardens. I've gone to somebody who has done community gardens and planned for these before. It's not my expertise, and I wanna make sure that the community gets what's appropriate, and so that's why we budgeted the five thousand. Yeah. It's the whole.
And I understand, but we're talking two hundred thousand dollars worth of funds. Where did the money come from, first of all? Did it come from our taxpayer money, or is this a grant that we were given to beautify our community? Where did it come from? It was a rebate. I mean, I have to ask the question, you know. It was a rebate from our electrical aggregation for two years prior.
Okay.
So it was, it's no taxpayer money being set aside for it. Uh, the aggregation that was in place, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, that aggregation program had rebates attached to it. That money came back to us in rebates. That money we set aside. The rebates through aggregation have all gone away, right? Um, actually, I think that, they've all gone away, to the extent that they were, you know, a hundred thousand dollar rebate. Um, we're using aggregation for green energy, right, which is a much better use of aggregation. Um, but that money came to us from the aggregation company, uh, as a form of a rebate, twenty-one, twenty-two, and that money was set aside for community garden.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
I have a, I have a quick question, Doug.
Your name and?
Kim Darlin Greenbrier Drive, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, when are we gonna start the soccer field and the baseball fields?
So, uh, the turf for the field has been, uh, purchased. Um, they're waiting for some permitting things from the state. Um, for the soccer field, the baseball fields are planned for the fall.
Oh, so by next year?
Not, not turf, just the work that we talked about, upgrading the fields.
Yep.
Oh, nice. Okay, now for the elephant in the room. Peter, would anybody explain what the litigation is, or should we just guess?
The closed, the closed session?
Yeah.
It's closed for a reason.
Well, I realize that, Peter. I get that. But do, do we as residents get to know any of that?
What was in closed session?
What the litigation is.
It was in closed session, so no, I, I, I'm not at liberty to discuss.
Thank you. That's why it was in closed session, though, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody from public, resident, anyone, none? Okay, next. Number one, pending litigation and probable or imminent litigation pursuant to open meeting at five ILCS one-twenty oblique two C eleven.
We're adjourning, Mayor.
Okay.
We're adjourning to executive session, but that's the call for executive session. There needs to be a motion.
I need a motion, motion for executive session. Uh, trustee Light?
So moved.
Are you ending the meeting?
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
There is another one.
We're adjourning the meeting to executive session.
Okay.
Was there a second, Marie?
Yeah, second, trustee Schmidt.
You need a roll call?
Roll call.
Trustee Light? Trustee Light?
Oh, sorry. Uh, yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
We can adjourn.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned.